We will call to order this Tuesday, September 12th, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. And our first item of business is roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, Madam Vice President. Trustee Feumster?
Here.
Trustee Frankel? Trustee Simon Haaland?
Here.
I'm here. Trustee Mayer?
Here.
Trustee Raymond?
Here.
And Trustee Taylor?
I'm here.
Thank you. And let's have a pledge of allegiance led by Roger Edwards today. Mr. Edwards.
Please join me. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Our next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment, J.J.?
Yes.
Kim Robinson? Sounds like it's on.
There we go. Hi, my name is Kim Robinson. I'm the Executive Director for the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency. And I'm here today to chat really briefly about our upcoming regional plan update and our public engagement. And we are here to say, first of all, thank you so much. We've done some work with the school district in the past, including, excuse me, the housing study that we published in late December. We've gotten a lot of support and interest around that particular piece. And so we were really thankful to work on that with you. Really quickly, just let me share, for those who don't know, the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency was designed to foster coordination around the use of land and regional resources, such as water, roads, concerns around air quality. We do this around Washoe County, and we definitely emphasize the more heavily populated areas. Our regional plan has a 20-year horizon, and it influences plans, other plans in the region at a very broad level. So one of the questions I get asked a lot is, why should we plan regionally? And the answer is, because growth really does not know boundaries. You could live in Reno, work in Sparks, play in Washoe County, but the expectation is that there are a variety of services available across all of those jurisdictional boundaries. So why am I here today? Well, as I mentioned, we've recently launched the public participation phase of the 2017 regional plan update. It's a five-year update, and our community has changed a lot in the past year, well, past five years, excuse me. Whether it's the economy, demographics, land uses, we've seen a lot of change, and we expect to see a lot more. And we want to be prepared. So since the regional plan addresses topics such as population, conservation, and infrastructure, this is the perfect opportunity for everybody to get engaged and share your thoughts around the future of our community.
Okay? We coordinate with a variety of?
That was a hint, I think. We were, we coordinate with a variety of agencies. But most important, what I really want to share with you today, and I know that you've got your, the presentation there in front of you, we have a website, PlanTrekkieMeadows.org. This is specifically for the regional plan update. We are doing a variety of surveys over the next year. Our first survey is out. It's really about the future of our community. We are asking everyone to go to PlanTrekkieMeadows.org, take the survey, share it on Facebook, share it through your social media, share it with your friends, ask others to take it, too. This is really the opportunity to get engaged, as I said, and share your vision for the future. Thank you very much for the.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Appreciate that. J.J.? Roger Edwards. And again, just to let folks know, you have three minutes. Mr. Edwards?
Roger Edwards, for the record. Forty-year resident and 37-year military veteran, Regional Planning Commission veteran, County Planning Commission, lots of other things. Most importantly, though, grandfather of three, and I'm really concerned about data mining. I know this is getting beat around in front of you folks a lot lately, because it needs to. We hear almost daily of one breach or another of somebody's data that was supposedly secure. And what happens down the road? And we've got all this data on all these children that may be not children by that time, and it gets breached, it gets publicized, it gets laid out there for everybody to find out that, "In fifth grade, I punched some other kid in the nose." I don't need that kind of stuff. You know, when I have a, if I work up to a position of some kind of, you know, value in the neighborhood, I don't need somebody making a big deal about who I might have been 40 years ago. And I'm really concerned that we are putting this together. It's, it seems like something that, you know, I went to school a half a century ago, and I had a folder. You know, if I didn't get along with my science teacher, he wrote a note and put it in my folder, and it stayed there. But then, when I was a great student in history or something, that stayed there also. That's all the data mining we need. So please reconsider, when you guys get a chance to approve data mining, and I see your 3.18 today is, is maybe data mining, I haven't done the research on it, so I can't be sure, but please think this through, okay? I think we're, we're putting together stuff that we're gonna, it's gonna cost us a lot of money to do that is just not necessarily all that beneficial to students, especially down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. J.J.? Wesley Griffin? And Mr. Griffin, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hello, esteemed School Board members. I'm Wes Griffin, and I'm here to speak in favor of saving Wild Creek Golf Course. I'm sure, as School Board members, the value of the School Board's goodwill is forever or always on your mind. And I'd like to point out a couple of things. You probably, probably all of us remember Esop's fables. Remember the lion and the mouse? And a lion woke up one day to a mouse playing on him, and he slaps his big fist down on the mouse and is about to snuff his life out. And the mouse begs for mercy. And the lion says, "Okay," finds it kind of amusing, so he grants the mouse mercy. Well, not too far in the distance, or in the future, the lion's caught in a trap. And the hunters go off to find a wagon to haul the lion off in, and the mouse hears the lion's dreadful bellows for mercy and help, and he goes to save the lion, and he chews through the ropes and frees the lion. Now, what significance does that have to where we are today? One of the things, of course, is Washoe County School Board is a huge organization, obviously. There's the WC-1, they're gonna collect 3/4 of a billion dollars for schools, and the people, the citizens, sometimes when we oppose certain things, we're like little mouths. We don't have big budgets and lots of dollars to present things. So we're kind of stuck at trying to do the best we can by speaking to you individually. And we have a group that we formed, Save Wild Creek, and we meet every Tuesday at 7:00. And we would invite you, each of you, especially John Mayer, our board member, we would invite you to attend our meeting. We're very friendly. We're, in fact, one of our goals is to try to find a win-win-win solution. Win for Washoe County School District, win for citizens of Washoe County, and win for the RSCVA. So please join us. Come, you know, we'd like to talk with you. We have some very valid points. You need to hear them, because someday, we might be of value to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Steve Dolan? Welcome, Mr. Dolan. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Steve Dolan, Incline Village, here for two issues, essentially. First, psychological testing, and I guess it piggybacks with data mining. And I trust that all of you are here with good intentions for the kids. You wouldn't be here doing this right now if you weren't, so thank you for that. And I'm sure that you hear a lot about this from Mr. Appolito, but he, he brings to the table these things like data mining and psychological testing regarding children with good intentions as well. He is just as earnest in his love of the children and protection of the children as everybody here. The thing about these psychological tests and parenting is that really, all of you would like to have, to be informed and given the option on some of these types of tests and data mining and things like that for your own children. And I think you need to just extend that out. And I appreciate that I've been informed of these things through Mr. Appolito. And what we have to remember, the gentleman before you was talking about data breaches and Equifax, of course, we've all heard of, but beyond that, the psychological process behind most of the data research and the psychological tests that you have today have been around forever in folders or in IQ tests. And they have always been subject to the dogma of the day, and they always change with the political landscape, they change with each graduating class from Harvard and Berkeley. So we have to be aware that what you think you're doing now is probably better not done, because you don't know what is going to be in the future. So that's what I have to say about that. The second thing, which I've been here before regarding, I don't want to defuse that last information, but I understand that you guys are reevaluating the value of the elementary, the abandoned elementary school up in Incline. And I'd like you to remember that it's on a fault line 500 years ago that dropped 10 feet and slid 13 feet. I live above, on the high side of that fault line. It's 70 feet it's dropped. I don't know how you can evaluate its value for sale, but we hope you can sell it and have an interagency relationship with Incline Village, because our children need that area, our families do. And so I want you to please think about that as blighted property and, you know, just having a great relationship with Incline when it comes to that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Carol Feinberg? Welcome, Ms. Feinberg. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Carol Feinberg, for the record. I am a concerned parent, grandparent, and former teacher. Actually, I'm very concerned about the psychological assessment of students in Washoe County schools. Are these mandatory behavioral assessments being performed on all students in Washoe County School District? Are parents informed prior to the assessment so they can choose whether or not their children will participate? I'm pretty certain if parents knew about these assessments, they would not want their children involved. Is there an opt-out for psychological assessments? We all know students progress and mature at different rates, with different trigger points, and respond to different stimuli. I was a late bloomer and an emotional hotbed, as were both of my children. Fortunately, we all grew out of that stage where simple tasks and assignments intimidated us and tearful emotions ruled, and we had become productive members of society. Had there been a psychological or behavioral assessment during my public school years or those of my children, a bad day or a bad week would have permanently scarred my record, labeled me as disturbed, and perhaps pigeonholed me into an academic program that was not appropriate. Can you see the very negative aspects of such assessing and categorizing? And who else or what other entity will be privy to these assignment, these assessments? Will that assessment follow the child through public school and into institutions of higher learning and into the workplace beyond? I can't imagine it would have helped my career any at all to be labeled as an emotional wreck. Can you see that meddling into children's personal, social, and emotional learning is playing with fire? Parents need to be told before this happens to their children. No, you need parental permission before psychological and behavioral assessing can happen. I have way more questions than can be answered here today, but I would welcome any answers from any one of you, personally, privately, publicly, anywhere. Just call me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feinberg. Jane Lyon? Welcome, Ms. Lyon. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jane Lyon, and I live at 9260 Hidden Park Drive in Reno. I have been here since 2005. I would like to second all of what you just heard. It is so important for, as a former teacher, for parents to be involved in decisions that involve their children. And if you're not willing to do that, you shouldn't be doing anything, nothing, because the parents have a right to decide what happens with their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyon. James Benton? Welcome, Mr. Benton. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board members. I am here to talk about psychological testing. This weekend, I was talking to one of my neighbors, they have two kids, and they were also concerned about the, the testing, concerns about especially third-party testing, testing corporations through using computers and then keeping that information and not, and the parents not having access to it. Today, I brought in a copy of a Wall Street Journal article, "Have You Seen Junior's Psych Profile: Public Schools May Be Assessing Your Kids Without Your Consent?" In this article, it talks about the DEVERX Student Strengths Assessment and the different domains covered. And also, it mentions that teachers would be doing this every month. We have some federal regulations protecting parents, FERPA and HIPAA, but I believe it's a School Board member's most duty to inform parents and protect them. At the end of the article, Dr. Ada Carrundolo writes, "Schools have an obligation to students and their families to protect the privacy of the information collected in the education setting. Human health information teachers are now obtaining, storing, and tracking with tools like the DEVERX test as equally as sensitive as that collected in a doctor's office, and it deserves the same protections." I would like to see the school district put out some regulations identifying these issues and protecting parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Cleo Street? Ms. Street, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Cleo Street, but that's okay. I agree with all that has been said previously, but I'd like to talk to you about cursive I understand that you are now giving teachers five minutes a day to work on teach cursive. That's only two minutes longer than I get to talk to you. The, I talked to my postman. They hire people for the post office at 18 years old. These kids cannot read cursive. Do you want to start sending all your birthday cards, graduation cards, sympathy cards, printed envelopes, because the kids cannot read them to deliver them? I have a niece whose son is 16, he's on the honor roll, he has a driver's license, he has a pilot's license, and he cannot write his name. He cannot get a loan to buy a car because he can't write his name. Why are we not teaching cursive in the schools? I, I don't understand it. Can you give me a good reason why we aren't? No, you can't. Okay. Well, I guess that's all I have to say, then.
Thank you, Ms. Street. And the Board does not engage in a back-and-forth in public comment. It's your time. That's why we don't answer.
How do I get a reply from you, then?
We, we may reply at the end and may not. Thank you.
I'm sure you won't.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Okay. That's my daughter. Her name's Gigi. I told her, stand up at the beginning, so you knew who she was. So my name is Janet Kreitz, and I am here on my daughter's behalf, because I can speak for her better than myself. So there we go. And I'll try to be quick, because I didn't know it was three minutes. I named this "The Good, The Bad, The Ugly" based on the Clint Eastwood movie back in the day. I'm a single mom, and I took off unpaid time to be here today, since this is held during the workday from 2:00 to 4:00. So if they had the meeting after hours, work hours, I could be here and be in a paid, you know, be paid for the full day at work. My PII, which is Personal Information, was stolen in 2015 when I was a federal contractor. My daughter's was stolen when she was one, when the laptop was taken from the doctor's office. So we've already had our private information taken. So I'm here today to talk about the data mining as well. The topics today, if you'll look at the last page, this is a Nevada plate that they put out, the state of Nevada, and it says, "Protect Nevada's Children, Exploited Children." So the state deems children's protection very important, that they would put it on a plate. Now, take this last page and clear it up, because that's somebody's PII on there. If you look at the second page, there's an example of the plate that's just clear. So that's nobody's personal information. So that one's a good one to use as an example today. This had somebody's, it was on Google, but it was somebody's license plate. Let's see. So my job as a parent is to keep her safe, instill values, protect her privacy. And I would say, job as educator, same thing. Keep her safe, teach academic instruction, protect her privacy. And the data mining, to me, we don't know what's going on with that, so I would hope that that's protected. If not, can we just stop her out of it? If you'll look at the next page, how are they affected in the day? The kids are overtested. Gigi, I think, was tested 13 days out of 20. She kept coming home last year in fourth grade at Double Diamond. I have another test today. I said, "What are you talking about? Another test, another test." If they could limit, which tests do we, do they have to take? Number two, online data mining. Number three, Common Core math destroyed her math confidence this last year. She was K through third going like this, and then Common Core, it was like this. Number four, the fundraising, if they could please stop that. She got her earphones on. So I went to the share meeting last year, and next year, she's gonna be in sixth grade. They're gonna talk about anal sex, oral sex, heavy kissing in sixth grade. I would hope that that doesn't happen. Okay, sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitz. Sorry, J.J., the name again. Kathleen Shep. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Shep. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon to you all. I am Kathleen Shep, and I am here to speak against placing a high school at the Wild Creek Golf Course site that is a $30 million asset to our entire community. I don't want to see it devastated. When I did some studies about parking, I discovered that at least 15 acres would be necessary just for the student body alone for parking. So that's taking that beautiful golf course and paving it over with 15 acres of asphalt. That's just for the student body. That's not for the teachers and the other staff that's necessary to operate the school. I think it's very wrong, and, and I am very concerned about the animals, even though you say, "Oh, well, you know, we're just gonna use a little bit of it. It's 212 acres, and we're only gonna use maybe 80 acres of it." But that's gonna open it up, okay? So you take a bite of, out of it, and then what's gonna happen to the rest of it? Is Washoe County gonna step forth and actually turn it into that utopian site that has been presented to us all? I don't see them doing that. I don't see them throwing money at a project like that, particularly when they already have a wonderful asset there. There are roads that are gonna be needed and all sorts of other things. But speaking of roads, our roads are congested enough over there. We have problems on North McCarran and the Pyramid intersection. It's really bad, and it's going to get worse. There are so many other places that you can place a high school, and we know that you do need a high school. We know that we all need a high school. We need our children to perform better in school, but it's not going to be just because of a location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shep. Margaret Martini? Welcome, Ms. Martini. You have three minutes.
Margaret Martini, Incline Village, native Nevada. You know, I've been here for lots and lots of meetings over the years and lots of different issues, and I've watched videos from when I can't attend. And I'm just wondering why Mr. Appolito is so disrespectfully treated. You're not answering his questions, acknowledging them or anything. And, you know, I've seen many eye rolls and et cetera, and it's just unconscionable to me that you, as a School Board members, are so disrespectful. And you're not considering the validity of his concerns. He does extensive research on that, and I would have to say that probably all of you do a minimum amount of this kind of research. He has volumes, and he studies it, and you discount what he says, and it's just not right. When in reality, you, as Board members, should be asking these questions. You should be researching these issues like he does. That's your job. That's what you were elected to do, is to be knowledgeable on all of this. And you're pressuring the students to use third-party websites without asking the parents or educating the parents on all aspects and implications of them sharing an incredible amount of data with these vendors. It's not enough that, you know, you're sharing them with the school system, but you're sharing them with third-party, in-the-cloud vendors. It's not right. Some teachers are making it difficult for students to participate in curriculum and classes without sharing personal information and their schoolwork. They shouldn't be penalized if their parents don't want them to participate in this data sharing, and it's happening. Hundreds of thousands of dollars between curriculum, teacher training, on this abstract concept brought forth by, of all people, Goldie Hawn, her foundation, and instead of backing, spending all this money on backing, teaching the kids cursive, there's a lot of mind-hand coordination and et cetera that goes along with cursive, and it's done in the developmental stage of these children. Sharing party with third-party vendors is not a function of educating the children. You should be vigorously making every effort to educate and inform each and every parent of the fact that there is this data gathering of student information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martini. Yolanda Knack? Welcome, Ms. Knack. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Esteemed School Board Trustees, thank you for listening to our concerns. I live in Incline Village. By the way, my name is Yolanda Knack, and my issue is parental consent. I actually have a master's degree in nursing from UCLA. If a child was brought, anyone under 18, to a clinic, even did you see, like, a psych tech or anyone, they would have to have at least one parental signature and maybe two. If the parents are divorced, both parents have to sign. So my issue is, I don't think any psychological, social, or behavioral testing should be done without a parental signature. To me, it smacks of what they did in Nazi Germany. Of course, they did much worse than something like this, but still, they, this is one of the things they did do. And my thought is, it really should be illegal now. I've already contacted two of my legislators, asking to make it so. And I hope you don't do any of this testing in the future, and I hope, I do hope that it gets, becomes illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Knack. I'm sorry for. I'm sorry for the mispronunciation of your name.
Sure.
Donald Gallimore. Welcome, Mr. Gallimore. You have three minutes.
Hi there. Good afternoon. Thank you for the three minutes. Two minutes and 58 seconds now. Hi, folks. I'm Don Gallimore, Sr. I'm a member, a board member of Protect Nevada's Children. And we seem to have already determined that our kids are in peril for psychological testing, for data breaches, of which Edmundo has been one, and then certain other things that our children are being exposed to, including opt-out capabilities or opt-in capabilities, of which we are now going to probably be pursuing in the near future. We are trying to do this the correct way or the easy way, or whatever the case may be, in terms of bringing this before the board and the trustees, trying to handle this that way. But there may be something else in the works in the near future. We know that also, that social-emotional learning is a part of this school board's job, duty, agenda, whatever the case may be. We've determined that the teachers are under duress because of their overteaching and the connection between the testing and their jobs, their salaries and where they're placed in the school district. So, or if they're fired, in just the case of fact. We already know that the American Institute for Research, AIR, is eugenics. That's killing our kids, pigeonholing them into different categories for their life expectancies. The Collaborative Academic Social and Emotional Learning, CASL, is tracking students. Social-emotional learning equals, is the same as eugenics. So they're all in DESA and DEVERO. So we've got to, we're here to make sure that DESA and DEVERO isn't malappropriated. And that's one of the main things that we want to make sure of as Protect Nevada Children. That was an interesting point the lady presented earlier about the respect level of Mr. John Appolito. He has done a lot of, a lot for the school district and the state, whether you want to believe it or not. He's opened eyes and made sure that some of the more egregious symptoms in the school district have been exposed. So I give kudos to Mr. Appolito. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallimore. Bill Horn. Mr. Horn, welcome. You have three minutes, as you know.
For the record, my name's Bill Horn. I just spent the last weekend over in Grass Valley in Nevada City, celebrating Constitution Weekend. It's a compliment to each and every one of you. The speaker talked about citizen government and how, when we founded this great nation, at the end of the day, after legislating, you went back as a farmer, as a lawyer, and doing your job. So, other than those in the audience, on the board that are retired, I compliment you for being citizen government and volunteers for a tendency purpose. It probably doesn't matter that much, but I've got 27 years as a Washoe County School District Education Volunteer. Nine of our 26 grandchildren have gone to school here. Five of our seven children have gone to school here and graduated from the local high school. And my wife taught at Echo Loda for seven-plus years. What I have found about John Appolito's research, I find it to be 99.9% accurate. And so I'm here to support him and his concerns regarding the pressuring of children into data mining and third-party webpages as well as assessing without parent approval for psychological testing. And John, just for your knowledge, Mary and Conrad just celebrated her 92nd birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. That's all I have at this time. Thank you, JJ. Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Appolito. Welcome.
One more. Thank you. My name is John Appolito. I'm the president of Protect Nevada Children, and I have three kids in the district. And I taught for six years. We just had 11 people come up, and I believe there's one or two more, that I, I hope you people will start to listen to what we're saying. Because so far, I don't think you've been listening. It's unfortunate that we have to bring 11 people in here. It's unfortunate that you won't listen. It's unfortunate that you people won't meet with me. But that's the way it is. We'll bring 11 people. We'll bring 12 when we need to. We'll bring 15. It's not my first choice. I'd rather not be here either. After 10 months of asking about the DESA, the DEVERO Student Strengths Assessment, we finally got some answers from the district. And the one answer that we got was that the DESA is not a psychological assessment. Well, according to the Wall Street Journal and their own website, it is a psychological assessment. You people can call it whatever you want. And I understand that it's the attorney and Mr. David, whatever his last name is, Lazick or Lysick, trying to CYA, because you guys have already given this assessment to several students in the district without parental consent. So I see that you're trying to cover your tracks. And I know it was given last year before some of the school board members were here. So maybe the new school board members will help the old ones see the light of what they're doing is wrong. And even in the last email, we could not get a straight answer of whether this psychological assessment will be used again this school year or not. So again, you guys can call it whatever you want. And the Wall Street Journal and DESA themselves don't agree with David Lazick. On the New York Times, this Equifax article, the New York Times also, actually, the other one was Wall Street Journal. This one's New York Times. Equifax just had a huge data breach. And there was an article in yesterday's New York Times, and part of the article that said this. "Big corporations have poured large amounts of money into the political system, helping to create a regulatory environment in which consumers shoulder more of the risk and companies less and less." This is just money. It may have affected some of you on this board. The problem is, this is exactly what's happening with the ed-tech industry, except it's much worse. Because what we're dealing with, with the ed-tech industry, is the future of our children. And I wish I could get through to you people and make you understand. I get so frustrated. I'm glad that people will show up, but you guys are the ones that can make a difference. You're the last line of defense for 65,000 kids in the district. And I guarantee you, some of those kids are going to be adversely affected by what's happening in the schools now, just like Mr. Edwards said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who wants to address this under public comment at this time? Okay, if not, we will close the public comment. I do believe Superintendent has some information she wanted to share.
Thank you. I would like to clarify that Mr. Appolito has received multiple responses to his questions, and the latest response was sent to him undocumented on August 30th. While Mr. Lazick and Mr. Lombardo provides answers, their answers are on behalf of the Washoe County School District. They are not answers of the individual, to be clear with everyone in the public. The DEVERO Early Student Strength Assessment and student climate surveys are not psychological assessments or profiles. In Washoe County School District, psychological assessments are administered by a licensed school psychologist at the individual level and are only permitted after written parent permission is obtained. Those findings are kept confidential and shared with the parents. I do want to address also, as a former 3rd grade teacher, I know all too well about teaching cursive, whether it was Zainer Blazer or Denilian, as part of content standards, probably 15 years ago. Through time, the Nevada content, the Nevada academic content standards has changed, and teachers are not required by law to teach cursive. It is no longer a standard. The standards have turned, some of them are more technology-driven, more updated, and teachers in our district are required to teach what the law tells them to teach as it relates to content and academic standards.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay, we will then go on to action to adopt the agenda. And if there are no changes to the agenda, Madam Superintendent, are there any changes to the agenda or any changes board members would like to request? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Trustee Kelly.
Second.
Second by Trustee Raymond. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Our next item is reports, board reports. No discussion among the board of trustees will occur under these items. And we will start with the board reports. Trustee Feimster, would you like to begin?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam Vice President. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who attended the Spotlight on Success program at Vaughn Middle School last Tuesday. It was absolutely wonderful. It was great that we added meeting the new principals because I, and the other new staff members, because, you know, we know their names, but it's great when you put a name with a face. And it was also, for me, it was very important to see the principal from Vaughn Middle School, because I was her principal. And I remember when she started working on this endeavor, and she really has earned this. And I'm so proud of the work that she's doing. So I've been invited to go back to her school, which I will do. And I also would like to, let's see, this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to speak to the Boy Scouts in Lemon Valley. And I didn't know what I was doing. I didn't know what I was getting into. I just got this little line, this little line that said, "Could you please be here?" And from your secretary, David, and Mr. Lazick, I received this little note. And I called the lady who was in charge of it. And she was in Louisiana at the time. And so we started talking about New Orleans and hurricanes and all of this stuff, because I'm from New Orleans, as most of you guys know. And the hurricane in Texas had just, was on, we're on the tail end of that, even though there's a lot of work to do. And the Hurricane Irene was, is it Irene? Irene was, you know, Irma, was bowing down on Florida at the time. So we had this great conversation about hurricanes. So then, I sort of got adrift of where she wanted me to go with this conversation with the Boy Scouts from Lemon Valley and their parents. And it was an absolutely wonderful conversation, because the students got, they had the opportunity to put me on the hot seat. And believe me, they were, they can ask the toughest questions, like, "Why, why don't we have any more candy in the school? Why no more cupcakes? Why school uniforms?" It is unbelievable. Had I known it was going to be that tough, I probably would have asked someone else to do it. But I did it, and I've got to tell you, it's so important to go back and be with those who were there for you when, you know, in the beginning of your education career. And I got to tell you, being with elementary students truly was just, I couldn't have found a better way to spend my Saturday morning. And if any of you guys get that opportunity to speak to the Boy Scouts or in the other groups, please do it, because you will be humbled in two seconds. But all in all, wonderful experience. I do have to say that the parents had a lot of other questions about the school district. So it was, you know, a real tough meeting, but I loved it. So those are my comments.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Feimster. Trustee Mayor.
I really enjoyed Spotlight on Success also. And I really was happy to see Jocko getting an award. It's well-deserved. And I would like to recommend, the next time we have an opening in the Safety Committee, since he served there, that we see if he won't do it again. Because he was an outstanding member of that committee. And I just think that his talents, we need to use. If, if, next time there's an opening, if he could be considered. And it was nice to go to Vaughn, you know. These guys talk about 45 years and that, 75 years around here. And I love to go to Vaughn, because the locker rooms are downstairs. And it just brings me back to when we'd come running up from that to play ball. And most of the schools were that way. And to me, looking at Vaughn and looking at the condition that it's in should be commended, because these are historical sites, really, these schools. And we've done so much to keep them up. And then I've done a few visits over the past couple of weeks. I went to Trainer Middle School with our superintendent. And it was quite a treat. They, we met with the staff in the library and found out what they're proud of and what's happening. And when we went around the school and we saw it, and I had a chance to talk to kids and stuff, and that was fantastic. And she does that, last year, with a high school freshman class. And now she's doing it with the, with the middle school. And I think you're going to Shaw, and I'm going to miss it on Thursday. But I encourage any of you that can go. She starts at 9:00 and goes to 1:00. They have lunch, and it's a great opportunity to talk to kids. And I was at Lena Juniper and Lincoln Park and Whitehead and Rizley and Maxwell and Dunn and DeCrickson. And I want to commend those teachers at DeCrickson. I was in one classroom that had a bulletin board. All her bulletin boards taught kids something. But she has a particular one. And I asked her to send me a picture, and she did, along with me and the students. I was happy to see that also. But on this bulletin board is she's got words, and it's not, you know, it's kind of jigsags and everything. And she's got "kind" and all these kind of attributes that kids should have. I'm glad that somebody is teaching manners and things like that. And she had all that up there, and it was just fantastic. And teachers are just doing a wonderful job and are to be commended for what they're doing. I was in one classroom at Juniper, and the teacher was doing hurricanes and had models of how the eye of a hurricane's formed. And the only way she could get those kids out of there was say it was recess time. And then they went out and built little volcanoes on the eyes of the hurricane. But it's hands-on learning. And I just really feel that our schools are in good hands with the teachers that we have teaching our children.
Thank you, Trustee Mayor. Trustee Raymond.
Thank you. I feel like it's been a long time since we were all here, so there's a lot on my list, and I don't need to go through all of it. But I'll pick a few highlights. I was able to join the superintendent at Virginia Palmer Elementary School a few weeks back for Let's Go to College, which is a great event put on by TMCC, the Sunrise Rotary, and with some support and with some support from the school's partner in Ed, Hobie's Casino. So it was a great event. The kids were super excited. But I really, I think, a lot of the commitment goes to the student representatives from TMCC that were there rallying the kids. They were so enthusiastic. They, you know, were, I think, completely identifiable to the kids and made a point of talking about how they were first generation to go to community college. And one of the young men was then transferring to UNR. And they talked about what that meant to them and how that relates to these kids sitting there. So that part was, I think, really powerful for them. Thanks to my friend, Trustee Mayor. I am a member of the Department of Education's Parent Involvement and Family Engagement Council. And I was able to go to a meeting down in Carson last week for that, at which our Diversity and Equity Department presented. And I want to just take a minute to thank Tiffany and her team for driving down to Carson in the morning, but for also making us look so great as a district. I mean, they just, I think, wowed everyone, both in Carson and in Las Vegas that watched the presentation. And I was so proud to be part of their team. I also attended last week the Art for Recovery event put on by Transforming Youth Recovery and just wanted to shout out to Innovations High School. One of their students painted a door, which sold at auction, and I missed the auction, so I don't know how much. But they also had a few students there performing. And it was just, again, another moment of pride. And the last thing, I went on a field trip yesterday with my daughter's class to, with Sierra Nevada Journeys to, and the name is escaping me, the name of the park. But it just reminded me of how many great partners we have in the community. We celebrated them at the Community Thank You, which I'm sure someone else will touch on. But it was great to see it in action and the kids were so excited. And it's such a great process because the Sierra Nevada Journeys staff come to the classroom for a couple of days before the kids go to Oxbow Park. And so by the time they got there, they were really prepared and excited. And it just, it made everything very dynamic for them, I think, just having the background before they got there. So thank you to Sierra Nevada Journeys for being such a great partner. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Raymond. Trustee Kelly.
I'll pass.
Let me call on Trustee Frankel. Are you there?
I am still here. I'm going to just, I'm just going to focus on one thing. The, just reiterate and thank Director Kim Robinson from Kentucky Regional Planning Agency for coming and encouraging participation in the public participation portion in the survey around the regional plan update. I attended the Regional Planning/Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning and Governing Board joint meeting a couple of weeks ago where I had an opportunity to see the survey. It's extremely user-friendly. I did ask the question about its ability to be accessible to those who speak Spanish. Unfortunately, it's not available in Spanish, but there will be a number of community meetings where they're going to have a number of translators and they're working closely with the university to provide that support, which is exceptional. The other thing I want to say about that meeting is that they have now, they surprised me with a standing agenda item where I get to report on the status of our capital projects. And I want to thank COO Pete Eckard and Riley Sutton for helping me at the last minute, put together some quick comments right there on the dais that I was able to use. And Pete was there to back me up and I appreciate their support and the opportunity to continue to keep the community apprised, because obviously there's a great deal of interest in the work that we're doing. A lot more to share, but I'll save it for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Frankel. President Angie, are you there? We miss you all.
Yes, I am here. To tell you, the new boardroom layout looks good online. Good on you two. You guys look good. I, I'm just here as well. And I have a report I'll have today. Thank you. Bye, President Holland.
All right, thank you, and we all send our good wishes. I would like to introduce our new Board Liaison, Samantha Frederickson. Are you here, Samantha? We welcome Samantha. Do you want to just, well, we can't really have her comment, can we?
At the end of the meeting.
Okay, we'll have you comment if you're still here at the end of the meeting. But we do welcome you. And I understand you were, you graduated from the UNR School of Journalism and you also went to law school. And we are very excited to have Samantha join us in supporting the Board. Thank you, Samantha. And a couple of other things, with Trustee Raymond, attended the community breakfast and with Superintendent, which was wonderful. We had a great turnout and we're able to thank our community partners. Also enjoyed the Spotlight on Success at Vaughn Middle School. Made some school visits with, with my colleague, Trustee Raymond, to some of them. I went to Jesse Beck, went to Anderson Elementary, went to Cannon Elementary, and went to Billinghurst Middle School. And the new principal there, Mark Hutchinson, has some great things going on. And my daughter graduated from Billinghurst and we, he actually, he had, he had worked at McQueen as a, as a trainer. And so I texted my daughter where she works at Google and said, "Do you remember Mr. Hutchinson?" And she said, "Hutch, tell Hutch hello." So everybody makes an impact. And it's, it's wonderful that these, these staff and administrators remember these kids, the thousands of children that they see and that they touch, that they affect their lives in so many ways. So we're grateful for that. And I will conclude that and turn it over to our Superintendent for the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. First of all, I want to report out on our Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals post that we put on Facebook. We had over 69,000 individuals look at that post and over 1,400 actually repost that. And when we talk about reaching audiences and going out, that's really great. We had 98.5% of the comments were very positive comments. So I think that's a good way for us to get information out about the work that we're doing for all of our children. We had some school visits. And all I'll say is that Trustee Mayor did not share with you his moonwalking skills, but we had a great time with the children and a great time talking with teachers about instruction and the learning opportunities and STEM. So it was really a robust visit. And it's intended to learn about that school, community, and how they do business in their community. So thank you for that visit. And as you mentioned, we did have our Community Thank You Breakfast. One of the things that I loved about that Thank You Breakfast is we talked about, we, the district did a walk-up song video around construction, but we talked about our walk-up songs and we talked about our walk-up songs with our community. And they had an opportunity to share with us their walk-up song, which they probably weren't so prepared for, but it turned out to be a really exciting, fun activity for us to learn about ourselves. But I also think it talks about how we work together as a community. A couple of weeks ago, I did a speech on C-SPAN 2 around our community and the work. And we are doing some phenomenal things in our district. And when we look at our work, we are not perfect, but we are doing some amazing things for our kids. And so we should be proud as a team, not just the Board and the Superintendent, but the 8,000 employees and the community, because we do this work together. And you can see how we're helping kids in a variety of ways. And then I think I'm just going to close with, this summer, we talked about capital. So we made a little summer video around capital. And JJ, are you ready to let it roll?
Maybe.
Let's hope. And then a quick shout out to Communications. We had a new teachers conversation corners where new teachers could come out and talk to the staff about any of the things that they wanted to talk about.
DeMonte Ranch High School, Hug High School, Reno High School, Echo Loader Elementary School, Pacolo School. I'm on a roof. We're out here at Vergi Elementary School.
Right now, we're out at Kylie North Master Plan Community in Spanish Springs.
Our first new elementary school in the South Meadows. Today, we're here at Wooster. You can see behind me, they're pulling one of the old rooftop coolers off the building.
And it's so exciting because there's so many projects.
And we're seeing it live behind us. This is repairs in action. The kids are out, the contractors are in. These lockers were just thrashed. This is not the only work going on at the school over the summer break.
Tracks and athletic surfaces.
The window is ready to be put in. This will help the school deal with capacity. Now, we're here at McQueen High School.
This has really been an opportunity for me to meet the operation side.
Taking it down to the studs, floors, walls, whiteboards, technology, to make it feel a little bit more modern, a nicer learning environment. There's a lot of different hazardous materials that are built into these schools, asbestos, lead.
Our kids at Pacolo deserve the best that we have to offer.
I can't wait to see them in their classrooms. It's just really meaningful to me.
This school had an old boiler room that wasn't being used anymore. And with funding available now, we've been able to expand it and turn it into a classroom.
And it's a great classroom. And it makes a big difference for students to be in a space that's new and clean and, and I think for teachers too, to come at the beginning of the year and have new technology. And it's going to be a great year for these kids.
The biggest thing that I noticed was students coming back and seeing the new classrooms that they have. And they actually tell each other, "That's new. Don't touch that. Leave that alone. We want it to be nice." And they, and it brings that atmosphere to the classroom, that the kids care about their learning environment.
These whalers here were 30-plus years old.
It keeps our buildings warm for kids.
Now, we're replacing about 44,000 square feet of what you walk on every day.
My room looks amazing right now. I'm literally obsessed with my carpet. Like, I love it so much.
It kind of gives my room a fresh start.
I already, I feel good about this next year because I have new carpet and I'm ready to go now.
It's baseball time of the year, right? In America, right? And everybody has a walk-up song. What would your walk-up song be?
Kendrick Lamar, "Humble."
You know, you just need, you need pumped up music when you come to school and when you leave. You need that, that take charge, just feel good.
Excellent.
The coolest thing is to be able to look at someone and say, "This is what we said we'd do and this is what we're doing." Because of WC1, now we can come back and finish the roof. This is also creating jobs.
There's an opportunity for anybody that has any kind of skilled trades to come back and get a job here. We've got a lot of construction work that we're going to be doing for a long, long time.
This area is booming. You can see all this construction equipment coming, hoping to break ground on this new middle school before the end of 2017.
It's going to be great for soccer games on Saturdays for people. I mean, there's a lot of community benefits to it, too.
This is a project we're really excited about.
It's a dream come true for our community.
We are so excited to have this school getting started.
Remember, you can always go to wcsbuilding.com for more information on this and all the other projects we're doing across the county to make schools better.
And that's it for me. Thank you. That's great. And thank you to the whole team and our Academy Award-winning Riley Sutton, who did all that stand-up. And Jeff, our cameraman. Absolutely. Thank you guys so much. It's a great job. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda items. Are there any questions about the consent agenda or anything that someone wants to take out of the consent agenda? Anything? And there were a couple of questions that I had submitted to the staff and I had my questions answered, and I thank you very much for that. Always much appreciated. If there, is there any public comment on any items on the consent agenda? Okay, not hearing any. Oh, yes, Trustee Mayor.
Saying this every meeting, I might just say it and have it permanently. The questions that she answers and the answers that, if they go into the minutes is public record, because I think they're good questions. And so every meeting, I've been saying that. So I'd just like it to be common practice, if that's all right.
Thank you, Trustee Mayor. Thank you. Okay, are, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves Consent Agenda Items 3.02 through 3.22.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Kelly and second by Trustee Mayor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Oh, yes. Okay, yes, there's a delay on the vote because our trustees on the phone are on mute. And so we'll let them, we'll give them more time to vote. I did consider those aye votes. Okay, that takes us to... That's great, thank you. That takes us to Item 4.01, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Approve the Proposed Metrics for the Objectives 1.1, Provide and Continuously Improve Rigorous and Relevant Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Practice for All Students, and 1.5, Provide and Continuously Improve the Pathway to College and Career Readiness Through an Aligned Pre-K System for the District's Current Strategic Plan and Vision, WCSD 2020. And we have quite an all-star team presenting today, led by our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Kristin McNeil.
Thank you very much, Vice President Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the Board. We appreciate the opportunity. If you remember back on August 19th, you all provided direction to our Superintendent to bring back specifically two metrics for your review this evening. If you remember, you all voted and approved upon objectives throughout the strategic plan from goal number one through goal number five. So the two objectives that we're going to be focusing on this evening would be Objective 1.1, Provide and Continuously Improve Rigorous and Relevant Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Practice for All Students. And our task that you all asked us to take on was to develop indicators to measure students' performance on credit attainment in high schools. And I have the dubious pleasure of introducing our Chief Academic Officer and our Chief Accountability and Assessment Officer, Ben Hayes and Debbie Byersdorf, who will be presenting those metrics to you all this afternoon. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, for the record, Ben Hayes, Chief Accountability Officer. I won't go through metrics one through three as you did that last month at the workshop, but we'll talk about number four in measuring performance and credit attainment in high schools. So this slide shows kind of, one of the metrics, and we've been looking at this for about five years, the percentage of kids that by the end of their 10th grade year, their sophomore year in high school, they've earned the appropriate core credits to be on a good graduation and advanced diploma or college readiness pathway. So that's taking algebra and geometry, of course, English 1 and 2, science and social studies, the required credits. So it turns out to be seven rigorous credits and a well-rounded set of credits. So we've been tracking that. That's what we would suggest for the strategic plan metric for this. But we wanted to check to see if that got to Mr. Mayor, Trustee Mayor's intent, that we also put in a bullet in there that we could add in a fine arts or ROTC, music, foreign language credit on top of that, if the Board wishes.
Knowing, looking this over, I felt that it's an excellent job of hitting my concerns. And I think it's a, for the public, it's easy to understand and it tells what it is. So thank you very much for the work that you did.
That's great. So we'll move forward on that, just so the Board knows. It's at about 67% all overall right now. And we can give you targets for different populations, but that will be, that will be what the metric we use for 1.1, 1.4.
And just as a, as a suggestion, when we take this out as a public document, it would be great if we had a little asterisk that explained what core credits were when we communicate that. I'm sure you would do that.
Very definitely, yeah. We'll list the specific classes in there.
Great. And President Taylor or Trustee Frankel, do you have any comments or questions on that one?
It does, Ben Hayes, for the record, again, Dr. Taylor. It would just show, so the major right now is really the four main core subject areas, so reading, math, social studies, and science. If you want, if the trustees want to add an elective credit, such as foreign language, fine arts, or something like that, it would just make a wider balance. That's of course something we track and something we, we put into the data summit once in a while, too, is the percentage of kids taking ROTC or foreign languages or fine arts. And we track graduation with kids that are taking one or more drama classes, art classes, and that kind of stuff. So it's not something that we're not going to track if you don't adopt it as a major. But Trustee Major was talking specifically about foreign language and arts last time. That's why you see that final bullet point. But I think the more stable metric from an accountability standpoint would be the core credits, those four that I mentioned. And then we can report to the Board certainly on fine arts performance and elective performance.
Great, thank you, President Taylor. How about Trustee Frankel?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Holland. And thank you to both of you for all this work on continuing to explore these metrics, because these are so important. I was just wondering, it just popped into my head, and maybe we discussed it at that workshop, but I'm trying to remember, we had a metric anywhere under this particular objective that, the particular goal and objective that had to do with the number of students or the percentage of students that are taking AP classes and how they fare when they take those AP exams. And here, I'm thinking about high school. those AP exams, and here I'm thinking about high school again. So did we discuss that and is that something that, that would add to our understanding about their readiness and the rigor of their instruction?
This is Ben Hayes again for the record. We did discuss this, I don't know that it was under 1.1, it's definitely one of the achievement gap targets that the board adopted last month, so when we say we're going to kind of track every, set targets for every student population on graduation rate and attendance and some of the state tests, it's under that metric. This one, just because of allocation, I think this is, how am I going to articulate this, this is a better metric, a more stable, a more reach-all and get all kids onto the kind of the intent of the Nevada Academic Content Standards and the Core Content Standards, instead of going AP, go this route, so there's not financial obstacles or some kind of summer work obstacles in some of the AP classes and stuff like that. This one might be a little bit better, and there's a, there's a good ceiling still on this one, like as I said, it was, it's about 67% right now district-wide, and it is, if you think of completing algebra, then completing geometry by the end of 12th grade, that sets you up for Algebra II and Trig, Precalc, plus some other coursework if you wanted in there. So I think this is appropriately advanced.
Yeah, and actually, I wasn't suggesting either/or, I was just wondering if there was an and, another, another metric, and I think this one is fine, and I'm comfortable with this one.
Yeah, so...
Thank you for your explanation.
Okay, yeah, sorry for, if I rambled, but we will have AP in there, it was in the last two strategic plans, and there'll be a metric in there for AP on this as well.
And trustee Frankel, there is, there is a metric under Objective 1.2 for AP, IB, and/or dual credit attainment rates, so that was, is in the next objective. I hope that, that meets your expectation.
Yeah, Ben, I was actually, I'm looking at the slides rather than that, so I didn't see that, but thank you for reminding me.
Great, okay, thank you. Yes, deputy superintendent.
So just to go back to trustee Frankel, so you all have the copy, the attachment, so if you take a look on page one, under Objective 1.2, you do have the reduction in achievement gaps, and so we are tracking the AP, the IB, and the dual credit attainment rates in there as well. So for our next one, for 1.1.5, this had to do with our indicators that you all asked, and so it was, the task before us was to explore the development of indicators of student success in career and technical education and post-graduation. And so again, I'm going to turn this over to our chief academic officer and our chief accountability assessment officer.
Good afternoon, Vice President Holland and Superintendent Davis, Deborah Byersdorf, chief academic officer. So again, as Dr. McNeil stated, if you think back to our work session that we had several weeks ago, we talked about the feasibility of exploring what are our students who are completers in our career tech education programs, and that means two years, what are they doing after they leave high school, once they graduate? So I've had an opportunity to dig into this a little bit more, and I think I have good news and maybe, not that it's not so good news, but more work that needs to be done to share with you today. No, wait, hold on, this is forward, whoops, go back. Right there, all right, so I'm going to draw your attention, again, Objective 1.5, Providing and Continuously Improve the Pathway to College and Career Readiness Through an Aligned Pre-K 16 System, and draw your attention down to that sixth metric, Explore the Development of Indicators of Student Success in Career and Technical Education Post-Graduation. So currently, what happens approximately six months after graduation, our CTE department under the leadership of Dr. Dana Ryan, reaches out to our completer students as best as they can, tracking them down, to find out what are they doing after graduation? Have they enrolled in a college or university? Have they enrolled in some kind of post-high school technical program? Are they now perhaps serving in the military? Or did they enter the job market? And if so, are they working in the career field for which they were taking their CTE courses while they were in high school? This information is self-reported, and Ben can certainly speak to the challenges sometimes that self-reported information gives us, but we also collect this information as best we can for some grants that we are able to take advantage of, for example, Carl Perkins, which funds a lot of our CTE programming in the district. So I'll stop there, Ben, and if you would talk a little bit about self-reporting data, and then I'll come back to a recommendation perhaps for you to consider around this metric.
For the record, Ben Hayes again, so the, it's not so much, it is self-report and it is perception, but a lot of times if you can get that to be stable over time, then it's, it's a good enough metric to, to use for some things. In this case, the response rate is kind of not reliable. Sometimes I looked, we all looked earlier, it's, sometimes it was 60, 50, 70, and that can change, you know, percentages, it can swing in 7, 10%. And the metric itself, we looked at the reliability over time, and it's just not stable enough to set strategic targets for, for the overall. In other words, we wouldn't recommend to you as chief academic officer and chief accountability officer, or the academic team, to change a district's strategy based on a change in those numbers. So we think this is a good, a great metric for the CTE, and I know, like as Debbie said, we, we use it for grants and things like that, along with kind of completers of CTE and increasing outreach, I think they're good initiative metrics, but maybe not a good strategic plan metric at this point.
So just to finish up, a little bit more information, Dr. Ryan and myself are working with Nevada Department of Education, who is also very much interested in this information, given the emphasis on career tech ed throughout the state of Nevada, and especially our emphasis to in our signature academy programs here in the district. They're concerned too, as for the reasons that Ben just stated, around the looseness, perhaps, I, no, that's probably not a term you would use, Ben, but noisy, noisy, we hear him say noisy a lot, the noisiness of this particular data, but we think it's very, very good information. So we want to partner, a little time to partner with the State Department of Education to come up with a better way to, to track, and other agencies perhaps, such as Dieter, that can come in and work with us as well, so that we can back map it and what can we do better in our high schools specifically to help our students make choices when they leave high school and be successful at those choices. So I will, I will echo what Ben said, too, and my recommendation would be perhaps not at the strategic level right now, but definitely at the initiative level, and give us a little time to work as a team to, to bring you better information.
And this is Ben Hayes one more time, I just want to extend the invitation in favor, if grant, if you will grant me a favor, the Board of Trustees put on their calendar, November 21st is the data summit, if you would like a deeper dive into these type of data and all the CTE data, we'd be more than happy to do that.
That's great, thank you, Deborah and Ben and Kristin. Are there questions for our staff at this point? So I think what we heard is that we're not quite ready to adopt a metric for that particular objective, but we certainly have some good thinking about it, and we'll continue to monitor that, and maybe, what, what do you think is a timeframe that we could look at this again?
Deborah Byersdorf, for the record, based on what I understand at this point, I think NDE is wanting to, when I say partner with us, we'll get past that six-month time when we will do our own due diligence in finding out what our graduates are doing, so I will, hadn't quite thought about that, I had thought perhaps through the school year, so I would think at least six months perhaps to, to get us to that point when we're doing our own data collection, and then working with the state as well.
Yeah, so Ben Hayes again, we discussed on leadership team, this would be a good research, institutional research project to see what we can find, and as Debbie said, we came up with, let's do that this academic year, and then at the end of next summer, we'll, should be able to have some good metrics.
Yep, that would be great research. Yes, Kristin, sorry.
So we are looking for approval for the objectives and our metrics at this point in time, and then just very quickly, I would also like to thank Dr. Marca, Dr. Green, Dr. Parks, the dream team as far as academics, we put a lot of work and effort and thought around this, we took your input very seriously, we went out to speak with our area superintendents as well, and to make sure that we got this, this part right, because it does have large implications as far as what we're tracking for students.
Okay, and I would, you probably will do this anyway, but it'd be a great opportunity to have our career and technical educators begin the process of engaging students and letting us know what they're doing after they graduate, so we can perhaps do a little marketing around that, and maybe have some fun with it, getting them to, to stay in touch with us, so that'd be great. Okay, if there is no other discussion, we would be looking for a motion. We're just going to be approving the metric for 1.1, and then continue to explore the metric for 1.5, that would be a little amendment to the motion that you have printed there, trustee mayor.
Yes, I'll move to the amendment.
Thank you, motion by trustee mayor, second by trustee Feimster. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Great, any opposed? All right, thank you very much, that passes unanimously, and thank you staff for all the work on this, appreciate it. Okay, next item is 4.02, which is Presentation and Discussion on the Activities of the Audit Committee from their meeting dated September 7th, 2017, and our internal, chief auditor, Paula Ward is here.
And a surprise guest.
And a, and a guest, would you introduce yourself for the record, sir?
Yes, I'm Tom Doyle, I'm chairman of the Audit Committee, teach me to volunteer, and I have with me chief auditor, Paula Ward, should we sit down? Sure.
Thank you, welcome, Mr. Doyle, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a, just a recap of the highlights of the Audit Committee meeting, I think it took us over two hours, so I'm sure you don't want too many details, but the majority of the items that the Audit Committee went through were to review annual and six-month updates on previous audits, so these are not full audits that we're presenting to the board, but rather updates on existing audits. So I'll just take you through a few of the highlights of those, and of course, try to answer any questions. The, we did the annual review of the Audit of Capital Projects, that was really boiling down to almost everything was implemented, and we verified that the final item that did get implemented, which was moving to a more automated process for change orders, and by doing so, we were able to work that with the Business Plus system, and essentially, instead of doing worksheets and not being able to reconcile, now the change orders go through, which obviously would be critical for future capital projects. And most all of these have been referred to the board, I believe you'll review those in a future meeting. The next topic was the annual audit of the employee overpayments and collection process. So the audit involved the fact that there are a number of overpayments to employees, and I'll give you a recap, there was a total amount outstanding as of the time of the audit of $108,000, excuse me, of this audit follow-up, that excludes about $68,000 that was put into collection, so if you want to add it up, you have over $170,000 in overpayments. The process generally speaking is payable, sends letters to the, to the employees or the previous employees that have been overpaid, asking them for remuneration to pay it back, and sometimes they'll get a call back and resolve it, other times it gets ignored. In the end, if it continues to get ignored too long, these overpayments end up in a situation where they get sent off to, to collections for pursuit in that manner. We don't, during the discussion, or, you know, some of the Audit Committee members asked, well, are we able to, you know, dock somebody's pay that's still a current employee, and, and generally speaking, that's probably a legal issue that's very difficult because of labor laws. And so the end result of the audit is we'll continue to follow it up, but some of these debts are over three years old, so they've been out there for quite some time, and the board could always look at, you know, taking stricter action. Lisa Woods, the payroll manager, was there to basically run through the efforts that they are currently making, and that kind of gives you an idea of that status. The next item is just involving the district's purchasing card, that one's pretty straightforward, that was just a matter of not reconciling it back to the, I'm sorry, Paula, was the agents, the credit card company?
Oh, Control Pay, I don't know.
The MasterCard, anyway, this is just a matter of, the business office needed to establish a process for reconciling to make sure that there were no improper charges, and I think during the reconciliation process, they sent like 155 of these back to the credit card company for checking on to make sure they're proper, just errors and things like that, nothing nefarious, nothing to, to be concerned about, other than they just need to make sure they do this. It's not exactly the full reconciliation process, but the internal audit staff did believe that this would cover the business office to be able to make sure these charges are legitimate. So that process was done, that was an implemented item. So the next area was the six-month follow-up of the Information Technology Audit. This had a number of recommendations, we were fortunate to have Ed Gracia, I hope I pronounced that okay, the CIO, and Alan Cunningham, who handles security for the IT department. This one had a number of issues that, you know, during the audit, there was a number of areas that they did not have plans set up for, so they needed to really set up plans, and then of course, following that, you would need to execute these plans. And just to give you a quick list, Information Security Configuration Management Plan, Information System Contingency Plan, Information Security Continuous Monitoring Plan, Incident Handling and Event Management Plan, and in the security area, Secure Configuration Management and Vulnerability Management Plan, that would address things like viruses and such, Monitoring of Network and System Activities, and Disaster Recovery Business Continuity. So those seven that I just mentioned are plans that need to be essentially formulated, documented, the audit obviously disclosed that, the follow-up obstacles, that just has not been done yet. Ed Gracia had indicated during the meeting that he will try to get these done by Q1 of 2018, so the internal audit team will go back in and evaluate at that time. Couple of things, just I think noteworthy that were brought up during the discussion, there's approximately 76,000 devices currently in the school district, about 35,000 of those are computers, the rest, of course, are other mobile devices, tablets, et cetera, things like that. Their virus protection's pretty good on all of the Windows-based devices, obviously with the Mac devices, they've struggled because they have a more difficult time. So we get into, the virus protection has been added to a lot of these devices, but you probably have half of your devices out there that have some risk of not having a virus protection. There's, the Wi-Fi has been secured better than it was before, apparently Wi-Fi passwords, you can go to the local library and the student will tell you what, how to get into the network. They actually had 35,000 devices, I believe, or 30,000 or 35,000, that they went out and said, okay, are these authorized devices tagged with the school districts, you know, how should I say it, WSCD, whatever it is, you know, code in the front of it, and they disabled 35,000 being able to access the, the network. Some of these were just not coded properly, so that people would call back and say, I can't get in, and they'd fix it, but a lot of them were just, just, you know, devices that really were not authorized to get in. So they, they've done a lot of work as much as they can, you have a staff of about 70 people in IT, and obviously with 70-some thousand devices in the field, they stay pretty busy. So that's just kind of an update, obviously, these plans need to be formulated, and then the, the board needs to make sure that they get enacted so that you're better protected in all areas, and so obviously, I think the, you know, the need for this is, is pretty clear and obvious. Couple other things that were approved, we approved the independence, was certified by the internal audit department, so that's been approved, also the self, annual self-assessment... by the internal audit department, so that's been approved. Also, the self, annual self-assessment was reviewed and approved, too. One other item that, I think it's one other item, couple items left. One other item is the transportation audit. Transportation audit was completed in the latter part of 2015, but it had not made it to the board. So the audit committee asked that the internal auditors go back to the field with the findings from that audit, talk to the transportation department, find out if those findings have or have not been resolved, and so that we're not providing the board with outdated information that would be unfair and not right. So therefore, they'll do that over the coming months and then that will be presented to the board once the findings are done. Yes, it's a two-year-old audit, but I believe most of the findings were probably, hopefully, they've been resolved, but the ones that haven't been resolved will be coming to your attention on that. And we did discuss the audit plan for next year. So just noteworthy on that plan includes an audit of the budget and audit of capital projects, which obviously is going to be quite timely, and then other things like facilities management. The internal audit department, I think as everybody's aware, is consisting of Paula Ward and three staff members. So it's not a huge department, so we have to make sure that those resources are diligently used so that they can hit the most critical areas for the school district. And that concludes my commentary.
Thank you so much, Mr. Doyle, and thank you to all the committee members. I know it's a tremendous amount of time that you dedicate to this process and a lot of detail and a lot of professional expertise that you've contributed, so thank you so much. Any questions? Trustee Kelly.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. So this, I have two questions. I don't know if Tom or Paula, you could, either one can answer. First one is, on all those thousands of pieces of technology, the iPhones and computers and all those different things, did you see anything about how, when they're ready for disposal, how the district goes about getting rid of them? Like, are they sold, given away, donated? So that was the first question. I wasn't sure if you had picked up on that. And then the second question I have is for the audit plan, you mentioned budget, capital projects, facilities. If the school board wanted to add an audit that we would want conducted or done, like, what's the procedures or the policies behind doing something like that?
I believe the board would make a recommendation and then would try not to probably disrupt an ongoing audit, but then we would fit it into the schedule and that would slide the other audits back. Paula can tell you probably the formal process.
Paula Ward, chief auditor. Right now, we are in the middle of our risk assessment and then starting our preliminary audit plan that will be presented to the audit committee at the end of this, well, the next quarter. And so, as part of that, I will be contacting board members individually, just to see if there's anything that you would like to see added to the plan. We do that as well as contact the leadership within the district and ask them if there's any areas. And then we bring that all together along with other areas that we have looked at, the budget, you know, for each department, any risks out there that we've been told. So we bring that all together and then we make a recommendation to the audit committee and then that goes forward to you so that you can also see if there's anything you'd like added. But anytime you see something that, you know, there's a concern that you've been told about, then we appreciate hearing about that. And your question about disposal, that is, for the IT, we, that was not part of the scope of the audit, so we did not look into that.
We did learn from the CIO that, you know, they do control pretty good a lot of the computers, but there are a lot of tablets and some of these even acquired by schools without IT really being involved and all that. So there can be a lot of devices out there that, you know, have been acquired over time, but I think Paula can reach out and find out the disposal policy and what happens with that equipment.
Yeah, I think that, I'd like to know. And I don't know if at a future board meeting you'd want to come back and let us know what you found, especially if technology is just being purchased and given from all sorts of different sources. When the district needs to get rid of things or, you know, can it be sold? Can it be donated so that it's not ending up in Latin fills? I'd just kind of like to know a little more about how that's done.
We can get you that.
Great question. Anything else? Yes, trustee mayor?
I notice this is just for discussion only. We don't move to accept the report.
Paula Ward, chief auditor. Those items that were on the agenda and approved by the audit committee to move forward to the board will be on a future board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, trustee Feimster?
I would just like to echo what trustee Scott is saying about just knowing where the additional computers, laptops, all this stuff is going. Because I mean, there's so much that we can do if we're just tossing it. I would hope that that's not the case. I would hope that we would look to our needy students and families in our community because there's a lot that we can do with our materials. So I just, I applaud that question. That is so important. And along that line, I've always wanted to know where a lot of our other materials go. For instance, I really think we need to tie the rain on a lot of the teachers' manuals and all of this stuff that are inside of schools because they disappear. And I know nothing has changed in this area, but I think it's very expensive. Teachers take them from school to school when they leave. And I really think we need to, and I know it's an enormous task, I will be the first one to say it's an enormous task, but if we could track this stuff so that we're not spending money on additional teachers' manuals and technology stuff that someone just takes from one school to the next. And I don't mean to say take. It just kind of gets into their stuff and they just take it to another, it goes to another school. So if we could just get a tighter rain on that, I think that would be so important. I don't know if that's, that would come under this, under your department, but I think it needs to be something that our district needs to take a look at, just keeping track of what we have. That's so important. So, thank you, trustee Kelly.
I can, Paula Ward, for the record. We have done an audit of, it was an inventory audit. So as part of that audit was in the last year or two, we did look at technology items and where they were as opposed to, like you were saying, a teacher or somebody may move it from one place to the other. So we did, as part of our testing, look at that and make sure when we do other audits that we pull the technology list from the site facilities coordinator, I believe they're called, for this school. And we make sure that those items are being tracked and inventoried every year. But on the other side, your teacher manuals, we haven't looked at that. So I'll put that down as a possibility. Sure.
Anything, trustee Frankel or president Taylor, anything you'd like to ask or add?
I'm listening for me, Mr. Holland.
Trustee Frankel?
I have nothing. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you both. And again, thank you for the presentation and it's great to hear all of the great work that's going on. Internal audit is an important function and we appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Vice President Holland.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, there's public comment on this item. Yes, sir. Mr. Eppolito?
John Eppolito. I just wanted to notice or mention the 76,000 devices that are within the district. And I know they said some of these are tablets without IT. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but in some ways, it doesn't even matter. And I guess this probably wasn't part of the audit. But the biggest issue is the third-party vendors that these kids are logging into every day and sharing work, personal identifiable information. And many of these vendors, we already know they're creating profiles. We're not saying psychological profiles, but people like Edmodo, ClassDojo, NearPod, they are creating profiles on the children. And that is the problem. And that's something no one on this board has been willing to address yet. Microsoft, I know is the platform we use. Microsoft is one of those vendors that signed the student privacy pledge, but every time there's a state that tries to strengthen their data protection for students, Microsoft is one of the people that shows up and fights against it. And it's just like this article from the New York Times about Equifax. The corporations are the ones fighting the data protection for the children. They're putting more and more on the kids and you guys are just the go-betweens. And the problem is, most board members have no idea. You guys can't say you have no idea because we're educating you. The question is, are you going to do anything about it or not? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eppolito. Is there any other public comment on this item? All right, seeing, we will move on then. Thank you. Item 4.03 is Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval of the Proposed Adoption of Board, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, could we have a five-minute break? Because I really think the thermostat needs to be controlled.
Okay, all right. Okay, why don't we take eight minutes and come back at five minutes to four at 3:55? Thank you. We'll be in recess. Emergency Planning Management Board Policy 6114, Emergency Procedures and Board Policy 9156, Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, and initiates the 13-day public review period for possible action. We have with us Chief of Staff Lasik and Emergency Manager Jim Hendrickson. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. And for the record, David Lasik and my name, my identity, social emotional learning, that's what we teach our students. So David Lasik is how you say my name. We have Board Policy 7700 before us. This was taken to the Board Policy Committee last week. There are, there was one change made on page two where we added parent guardians to the communication plan. Other than that, no changes were recommended from the Board Policy Committee, and we are presenting it with that change today.
Thank you, Chief of Staff. And just to summarize, we thank trustee Frankel for having reminded us to put that parent and guardian communication element in there. And then just to reassure the public, we are not deleting the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. That is front and center, very central to the new policy, but we're consolidating those other policies into one. So are there any questions or any discussion on this item? Anything from trustee Frankel or trustee for president Holland, president Taylor? Sorry. Oh, jeez. Yes, I know. I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. Sorry, president Taylor. Didn't mean to promote myself.
And I'd just like to make a motion if I can.
Please do.
I note that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed adoption of Board Policy 7700, Emergency Management, and the proposed deletion of Board Policy 1410, Emergency Planning Management, Board Policy 6114, Emergency Procedures, and Board Policy 9156, Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, and initiates the 13-day public review period.
Thank you, trustee Frankel. Is there a second? Oh, got a second from president Taylor. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Our next, oh, and was there any public comment on it? Okay. Next item is 4.04, Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval of the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 1505, Visitors to District Property Meaningful Access, which includes the addition of language related to alcohol, controlled substances, and weapons on district property, and initiation of the 13-day public review period for possible action. And again, our presenters are Chief of Staff Lasik and Emergency Manager Jim Hendrickson. Mr. Lasik?
All right, thank you. David Lasik again, Chief of Staff for the record, and with me Jim Hendrickson, our Emergency Manager. This was also taken to our Board Policy Committee last week. There were a few changes recommended. Those are highlighted in yellow. I'll point those out for the record. On page one, we added, under the visitor section, invited guests of the school district. On page three, we added clarity to a background check, which is fingerprint, is done through the fingerprinting process. On page five, we eliminated 10 working days, and so we're including a minimum time allowance for requests for a translation, but not delineating the time. And then lastly, on page six, the authority for individuals to carry concealed weapon will be granted by the superintendent in consultation with the chief of school police and office of general counsel. So that was a recommendation as well from the last meeting, the policy committee meeting. And with that, there were no other changes unless there's any other questions.
Is there any public comment? We did receive an email today from Ray Swigert, who is a teacher at Worcester High School. And I don't know where it is in the policy. He's asking that we consider setting the limit for dangerous weapons or dangerous knives to be a three-inch blade versus a two-inch blade, or perhaps as an alternative, make an exception for multi-use tools. He's talking about things like a Leatherman and other multi-use tools that have a two-inch blade that's very useful. You know, as a teacher, he says he uses that tool quite regularly at school. So I just wanted to provide an opportunity for that comment to be considered.
Sure. David Lasik, for the record. That public comment was in response to a staff regulation that's also for public comment related to weapons on campuses. It's in state law that it's two inches or more. It's in, that describes what is allowed on a campus. So we're following state law with that respect.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's valuable. Yes, trustee mayor?
I didn't hardly see that email, but could you please respond to the guy?
Yes, it was sent to all board members. So through the president and vice president, we'll work on a response that includes the NRS citation.
Thank you. Any other comments, trustee Frankel or president Taylor?
Just a quick follow-on on the previous conversation. I'm thinking about the schools where those kinds of tools are used. And so I guess one of the things I wondered is, does that come up in any of the other programs that we have where they might be using tools or implements or different things like that? I don't know. It's just a question.
Yeah, David Lasik, for the record. There is an exception in the regulation that's not being presented here where it's germane to the teacher's job or germane to the job of the employee. If they're, you know, a facility worker and they are, and there's quite a few of our employees who have tools. And so those tools might include blades or Leathermans, things of that nature. Those things are okay and that's stated in the regulation.
Perfect, thank you.
And we have public comment. Mr. Eppolito?
John Eppolito, for the record. I believe David Lasik was just talking about me. If I was making $180,000 a year with benefits like Mr. Lasik is, instead of doing all this on my own time...
That's not on the agenda, please.
It's a public comment. Can I continue or not?
The public comment should be germane to the item. There is a general public comment period at the end.
There you have it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on item 4.04? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion by trustee mayor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, oh, trustee Frankel, trustee Raymond beat you to the punch there. Trustee, okay, second by trustee Raymond. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, now we will move on to item 4.05, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval of the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 5250, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Controlled Substances, Student Awareness, Prevention, and Intervention, which includes language regarding district protocols related to prevention, intervention, and recovery efforts. regarding district protocols related to prevention, intervention, and recovery efforts, and initiation of the 13-day public review period. This policy was formerly Board Policy 6164.1, Substance Abuse Prevention for Possible Action. And we have presenting today Catherine Loudon, Coordinator of Counseling Services. Ms. Loudon, welcome.
Thank you very much, Chairman Davis, President Taylor, and members of the Board of Trustees. So when we presented this information to you previously, one really great point brought up by Trustee Frankel and also was reiterated by several others, there was a conversation about health plans and about making it easier for parents to access information. This policy is broad, and there are so many other related NRS and policies that we wanted to make sure we provided that clearly for you. So that's been added. And I believe that was the main addition that you were looking for, as well as the possibility of an annual review.
Trustee Frankel?
It looks good tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments by board members? Is there any public comment on this item? There's no public comment. Okay. If not, we will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed adoption of Board Policy 5250, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Controlled Substances, Student Prevention and Intervention, formerly Board Policy 6164.1, Substance Abuse Prevention, and initiates the 13-day public review period.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Mayor provided the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will go on. Thank you, Ms. Loudon. We will go on to 4.06, Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval of the Proposed Adoption of Board Policy 4500, Staff Freedom of Expression and Freedom of Speech, which includes language related to the rights and responsibilities of staff related to speech and expression, and initiation of the 13-day public review period for possible action. And presenting today, David Lasik, Chief of Staff, and Ms. Don Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Don Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer. What's before you today is this new board policy. It is regarding staff freedom of expression and freedom of speech. It's been heard by the Board on May 2nd, also on August 1st, went to the Board Policy Committee, and then also on September 5th, and we bring it before the Board today. Incorporated in this policy are suggestions that came from constituents, including our association representatives.
Are there any questions? Okay. I know everybody spent a lot of time on this, and I just want to congratulate staff, particularly Lisa and others, who have brought forward some very difficult topics and anticipated issues that certainly our country is grappling with. So thank you all for working hard on this. We appreciate the staff members as well out in the field who contributed to reviewing and thinking about this. So thank you all. Is there any public comment? No public comment. Is there any other board discussion? Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Board Policy -- I lost the number. 4500.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Raymond, second by Trustee Mayor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify.
Just clarifying that we're...
Yes?
That we're initiating the 13-day public review period.
Yes. Ms. -- Trustee Raymond is nodding.
Thank you. I thought of that right after I said finished.
And I'm sure the secondur agrees with that clarification. Mr. Mayor, do you agree? Yes, he agrees with that clarification. Thank you, Trustee Frankel, for catching that. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to item 4.07, Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval of the Proposed Adoption of Board Policy 4550, Staff Interactions with Students, which includes language regarding appropriate communication methods between staff and students, and initiation of the 13-day public review period for possible action. And again, our presenters are Chief Human Resources Officer Don Huckabee and Chief of Staff David Lasik, and welcome.
Thank you, David Lasik, for the record. So on this policy, we sent this out to our high school government classes, and so the public comment was included with this. We received quite a bit, 125 -- oh, I'm sorry. This is the wrong one. That was student freedom of speech, so different, different one. With this one, we also brought this to the Policy Committee. There were no public comments since then and now to clarify that. And there was one change initiated by Trustee Kelly that sparked a good question and a good dialogue amongst us as staff. So there are cases where even us as staff or board members have interaction with students outside of work, perhaps where, you know, my child is with their friend at their house, and so you're taking that person home or whatever the case may be. So we added on one C on page one, the language highlighted in yellow, where the parent guardian is aware of the communication and grants permission to hopefully add some clarity there from the last meeting. Other than that, there are no recommended changes.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? And thank you, Trustee Kelly, for bringing that issue forward. That was a good discussion, as you said. Yes, Ms. Huckabee.
And if I could just add one more thing, Don Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer. We have recently sent this to our associations. So there may be, during the public comment period, there may be comments coming from our association representatives at that time. But we also did take this to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission on August 14.
Great. Thank you for that additional information. Okay. Is there any public comment? No public comment. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Let's -- I would entertain a motion. This is on 4.07, Board Policy 4550.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed adoption of Board Policy 4550, Staff Interaction with Students, and initiates the 13-day public review period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Kelly and second by Trustee Frankel. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you. We'll go on to 4.08, Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval of the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 9110, Meeting Protocols, to Include Language Related to Submission by Members of the Board of Trustees of Supplemental Information for Items on Agendas of Meetings of the Board of Trustees and Initiation of the 13-Day Public Review Period. Mr. Lasik?
Good afternoon again. David Lasik, for the record. At the request of the Board of Trustees, we brought this policy to the last Policy Committee for discussion. The significant change being on page two, where board members may provide supplemental information or documents to a specific item on a board meeting agenda. So after that discussion, we revised the language that we proposed or that staff proposed to the language that was agreed upon at that meeting. All the other language is the same from prior.
Thank you, Chief of Staff. And that was a very lively discussion, and we -- there was a lot of give and take. I appreciated that discussion. Any comments from board members? Trustee Frankel or President Taylor?
I'll get it.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay. Trustee Mayor?
Yes. I -- I'm not completely comfortable with this. Does that mean like I can present something at the meeting? Or staff can present something at the meeting? So I thought we were going to write that so that if those kind of items came in, that we would postpone the agenda item to the next meeting. And that doesn't read that here.
Trustee Mayor, I'll respond on that. Where we landed was that, just like a member of the public can come in public comment and present something, a board member or a staff could add something at the meeting, but it would be up to the Board to decide whether to take action to delay. And so maybe it's just a one-word thing that, you know, we could still act, but it would be up to the Board to be able to take action to continue the item and have appropriate time to review it.
Well, I think to alleviate any problems, that that shouldn't be allowed, that a board member comes up with something at the meeting on an item that's listed as in the public notice and everything, and the Board doesn't have the time to review it, the public doesn't have time to review it. I think that things like that should require postponement to the next meeting.
Okay. Other trustees or superintendent comments?
Yeah. I think I just want to make sure John understands. So what the -- sorry. The policy is proposing is that board members would be allowed to add information to the packet that goes out to the public if they choose to. I think these are two different things.
Well, it also allows for information to be provided at the meeting. And again, I would like to be able, if you have information that comes to you between the time that the packet came out, you know, a week earlier, and then we're at the meeting and you have that information, what the policy proposal says is, when requested, action on the item may be delayed. And I don't think it should be automatic, because I'd like to be able to include your information in my decision-making.
Well, you would. You'd have two more weeks. See, I just don't want -- and I've had that happen to me many, many times. If I had a dime for every time, I'd be a rich man. But I don't think that these surprises, you know, and to get it into the packet, that's fine, because the packet comes out the Wednesday before. But to have it at the meeting when we haven't had time to research it, or the public hasn't had time to research it, we don't know if what it is is true or false or whatever. So I think it ought to be an automatic delay till the next meeting.
Okay. Yes, Trustee Feimster?
What I'm thinking, someone submits something during a board meeting, just like someone submitting -- submitted something today. That's someone from the public. But how would we, as board members, distinguish between this as our opinion or this being approval in the agenda? Because people will take it as us just saying that. If it's like 100 pages or even 50, no one has time to -- like today, whatever was submitted, I just glanced right through it. But there are things I missed, and I'm just apprehensive about just someone thinking that this is part of what I would endorse, whatever it may be, because it may not be something I endorse. And I guess, Neil, I was wondering if, I don't know, I look to the attorney for this. I -- are there any other public entities, like at the city council, do they just, can they just submit stuff like that? You've been on a city council, so you could probably...
Yeah, we have.
And I'm just wondering, is that, can we look to other entities to see what their practice is?
Well, I am, it's not commonplace, but I am aware of other entities doing it. I know that, yeah, the county did. I, you know, my take is, I always fear starting serial communications. I've said that last board meeting. But it's, you know, as long as we tightly, we can make anything work as long as it's tightly controlled, but it's a concern. You know, you have these communications going, and so that's my one concern with the... But in Carson, when I was the attorney there, we did not do it, but I am aware of other entities who have done it, so.
What about other school districts?
I am unaware as to school districts. I know when I did the open meeting law training for the Attorney General's Office 11 years ago now, we advised against it at that time.
Well, I'm not saying that's not legal. I'm just saying we advised against it.
And so there are the two pieces to this that have different implications for different folks. One is providing supplemental, actually, there's three issues. Providing supplemental material before the meeting, providing supplemental information at the meeting, and then having the ability to delay action on the item. And again, we've actually had, at least since I've been on the Board, times when, you know, Trustee Feimster brought an issue that a constituent had mentioned to you, or some information that a teacher had said, hey, how are we doing on, you know, minority achievement or whatever it is that occurs at a meeting? I know we have had some instances where, on the school lunch policy, we had, between the time that the packet came out and we sat here at the dais, we did have additional information, because folks had had an opportunity to talk to their constituents after it came out, you know, on the agenda. So, you know, I would hate to have us not be able to use that information and not be allowed to take action on it, but also have the authority to delay the meeting, which I really appreciate your comments on that. Because we have had copious amounts of data provided to us at a meeting, and you just can't, I agree with you, you can't review it in a thorough and appropriate manner. So you would want to request that action be delayed. I'm sorry, Trustee Kelly?
Yeah. As a trustee, I like flexibility whenever possible, whether it's making votes or decisions or whatever. And so my concern would be that if somebody, if a board member provides information at a meeting, and then we have language that says it's an automatic delay for a future meeting, to me, that kind of takes the flexibility out of our hands. We're basically saying, someone submitted information, we can't vote or talk about this thing at all, we have to wait till the next meeting. And that's why I like the way that this is written now, because it gives the Board the flexibility to say, you know, what was presented is something that we can look through quickly and then deliberate and vote then and there, or what was presented, it was too much information, and as a Board, we think it's important to move it to the next meeting. It provides us flexibility. So, I mean, my two cents is, I like the way that this is written now, because, you know, if Trustee Feimster or Trustee Mayor or if anyone thinks that what was presented is just too much information to digest, they can, we can delay that item for a future meeting. Maybe the next meeting or maybe several meetings from now, depending on what's presented. And so I like the flexibility of what's before us now.
So, I'm sorry. That's why the last, our last meeting, I suggested that the word "may" is exactly what we needed, and that would have taken care of what you just said, and there would have been no need to make all the extra changes. I thought it was perfectly written, and the word "may" handled that. I, at this time, I just, I'm wondering if, I want to do more studying. I'm wondering if this is one of those times that we can defer it for our next policy meeting, because I truly want to study this more. That's my thinking. I'd like to study it more. I'd like to look at other school districts and see what they're doing and just, again, I cannot see myself paging through 50 pages, 60 pages, and making a conscious decision about anything and having someone in the public thinking that I came up with this, with something that someone else submitted, and I back it 100%. I really want time. But again, I think what Trustee Kelly is saying is the same thing, that we could, I see us saying the same thing, that if we need time, request it.
And it does say that. It does say that. Can you pull that up, JJ? Pull up the language? It's on page two.
I think it's B2 is the number, on page two.
While she's doing that, Trustee Frankel or Trustee, or President Taylor or Trustee Raymond, does anyone else have thoughts? Raymond, does anyone else have thoughts?
I have a question. Trustee Raymond, speaking. What is the process to delay an item? If one trustee requests it, is it, does it become its own vote, or how would that process work?
It's a vote of the Board.
So someone would just, either there would be discussion and a motion, or someone would just make a motion, say, you know, I'd really like to make a motion to continue this item to a future meeting, and we'd see if we have a second, and then we'd vote to continue it to a future meeting. Trustee Frankel, or President Taylor, anything, any thoughts?
Well, my, my thinking, I think it's important for, for us to feel comfortable with where it is that we're going. So if we need to, you know, to get another unit or two for us to get to the place where niggling, you know, obviously it's important for us to be on good ground niggling, and for the trustees to feel, you know, like we're in a good place. I'm okay with that, you know? We haven't had this before, so we create something new, which, which could be very helpful. I think it's important for us to get to a place where, you know, we can all, that we can all live with. And I'm not quite sure that we're there.
Great, thank you. Thanks for those thoughts. Anyone else? Trustee Frankel? Oh, maybe she's not there. Okay. Well, this is an appropriate time, where if a board member wants to make a motion to continue this item to a future meeting of the policy committee, to return it to the policy committee, that's certainly an appropriate motion, or a motion to approve, or a motion to deny.
I would like to make, to make a motion for it to come up at our next policy meeting for additional discussion, and maybe, maybe we could have time to, and we probably could have done it this time, but just a little bit more time to look into what's, what goes on in other public entities and other school districts possibly. Because I can see, I see it both ways. I see it both ways.
Okay, is, is, there's a motion to continue it to a, the next policy committee meeting? Is there a second?
All second.
Yes, a motion by Trustee Feimster, second by Trustee Mayor. Is there a comment on the phone? Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? I don't think that was a vote to oppose it. Okay, all right, motion passes. Thank you, David, thank you, trustees. We will come back on that one. Oh, and we didn't have any public comment, did we? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 5.01, which is future agenda item requests. Do we have any agenda item requests from trustees? Trustee Raymond.
I wondered if we could talk about the, come back to the allocation process and have an agenda item where we look a little more at, I guess, kind of this stage of the process now, where we do the count day and the notifications go out, and then if there could be something also included about the, if we do have any comparisons for other districts, and what has worked and not worked in other places, I think it might be just good for the community to have a refresher on kind of this stage. We had a great refresher, I thought, in the spring about that early stage, and so now it's sort of the follow-up to that, I would guess.
That's a great idea, thank you. Trustee Mayor.
Yes, I've gotten a whole bunch of calls about LICE, or LAUS, or whatever you want to call it. And I really think we need to look at that item again, and make it clearer than it is, because there's so much out there that's not true, there's, it's just a hassle. So I'd like to see us review the LICE policy.
Great, thank you. And I think we did raise that at the policy committee, and though it's not a policy, we are, we have agendized it, I believe. Yes, I'm getting a nod from Chief of Staff. Okay? No, no, that's, no, you're absolutely right on point. Any, any others? I, I do have one that I talked to the superintendent about. About four years ago, the district did a, sort of a top-to-bottom review of efficiencies, and are there, is there anything we can do better? And, and I'd really love to see us have that fundamental review take place, so that it might inform our budget decisions. And it'll take a while to do, but I did speak with the superintendent about that. I'd like to have a board item, so we could discuss what that might entail, and, you know, what your expectations would be if we did that. So that would be one request I have.
Could I point out, that was done by the greater schools. And the reason that we didn't have any funding was because somebody was on the deal, and they, they would go review some other school. And so therefore, we, we got it, I think, for nothing, or at least dirt cheap, but I, as I recall, it was...
Superintendent has some comment.
But anyway, I think that...
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we can't discuss, that's right.
No, no, no.
We can't discuss.
Can't discuss.
That's right. Thank you, thank you for the reminder, Legal Counsel. Okay, any other agenda item requests? Yes?
I have one.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can talk again. I know that the decision to go to the balanced calendar is made with a couple of goals in mind with respect to interim sessions and supporting some of our students. And I think it might be time for us to revisit the calendar, and what we've learned from the balanced calendar experience, what we're seeing in terms of its impact on some of the original goals of changing the calendar, and along with that, some discussion about the start times. Because I've been getting a lot of emails from constituents regarding the calendar and regarding start time. So I'm thinking that's a topic for discussion.
Great, thank you, Trustee Frankel. And yes, there was, I guess it was a Wall Street Journal article, oops, I'm not supposed to discuss, sorry. Okay, any others? Yes, I don't know, can we comment? I don't know.
No, you shouldn't, you can't...
Not on anything here. Another agenda item, or? No, thank you. Well, let's go to public comment then.
Public record.
We'll close, we'll close the future agenda item requests, and then we will move to our final public comment item. Yes, Trustee Feimster.
Thank you, JJ. First of all, I'd like to welcome back JJ. I'd like to thank her for keeping me up to date, even in her time of, personal time off. I really appreciate that. Thank you for what you've done for me and for others, because I know you probably should be home resting, and hopefully you, maybe we'll give her a half-day tomorrow, or full day off, whatever. I think she's supposed to be off. Davidson, no, okay. You could work one hour tomorrow, and that's it. Okay. But thank you for being back. Thank you so much, because that's a special effort. And I'd like to thank Trustee Holland for, I think you answered some of the questions that I received. And President Taylor, both of you guys answered questions from my constituents at Alice Taylor, was it? No, Spanish Springs School.
Spanish Springs, yes.
And it was just a barrage of questions, and I ran right to David with that. And I really want to thank you guys for handling that, because it was important to the teachers, and they really appreciated the immediate feedback. And I think the area superintendent is, Don, is it? Joe. Joe was right there to be on top of that, and it really helps us, because it makes the trustees feel comfortable when someone, when it's right there responding to those questions. And I'm sure that's what Trustee Raymond is looking at also, just those questions that we just get, and they're, you know, the people are very upset about it, and we understand that. So I really appreciate whoever was involved, area superintendents, Dr. McNeil, I know you were involved, thank you so much, because that does take time, and you're dealing with individuals who are very, very upset, because their kids are moved at the last, you know, after two weeks, and in some cases, four weeks, and for those who started on the regular, the other calendar. And it's a tough issue, I understand that. So for all your professionalism, I really, really appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Feimster.
And JJ does get one hour to work tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Feimster.
Take off the rest of the...
JJ, do you have public comment?
Work on.
John Appolito. Mr. Appolito, thank you.
Yes, yes ma'am, thank you, John Appolito. On the DESA, the Deveraux Student Strengths Assessment, the lady who was trained behind me said that we should be calling that a psychosocial emotional assessment. But I do understand Tracy Davis's earlier comments on the DESA, and I also understand that that's a CYA for the district, because this assessment has already been given without parental consent. Now, please, do the right thing for the children of this district, and do not subject students to the DESA without parental notification. I know this guy's making $200,000 a year to tell you why you can, and this guy over here is making $180,000 a year to answer our questions late, but please, tell Protect Nevada Children you will not be using this assessment anymore, we won't all have to come to school board meetings. Yes, Superintendent Davis was correct. Through 8/30/17, the district answered most of our questions. She left off two things. We started asking some of them over four months ago. And the question Mr. Lasik and the district will not currently answer is, which schools will be using the DESA this school year? That question has not been answered. Third-party vendors, Incline Middle School, 7th grade, ELA, two third-party vendors are, I don't know if they're required, but I don't know how to get out of them either, and I don't know about the kids that don't have access to the internet, but the teacher wants to use NearPod and CSOW. That's one of the ones she came up with. That's one that the district has not looked at, as far as I know, according to the one person at the district that I talked to. They're the worst ones. Those are the ones the teacher should not be using at all. So my plea to you is, please make it so that children without internet, and children whose parents don't want them using these third-party vendors, don't get penalized in class for not using them, because that's what's happening now. Math 1, or math, 7th grade math in Incline, the textbook is online. So if the kids need extra help, or if the kids need to see a lesson again, they have to log in using the district email address. Again, not every kid has internet, and some of our children will not be getting a district email address. Please try to come up with something to get around that, so kids can still have access to the online textbook. And also, please educate parents on all aspects of the one-to-one devices, the third-party vendors, vendors, and the psychosocial emotional assessments, prior to allow, allowing their children to participate. I don't have enough time for the, thank you very, I don't have enough time for the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Yes, Superintendent Davis.
Yeah, Mr. Appolito, my apologies. I was answering your question around it being a psychological test. No one in the district is actually using DESA this year. Thank you. Just for public record, my response was to it being a psychological test. We do not use it for psychological matters. We use our licensed staff. No one in the district is using that test this year.
Yes, Ms. Martini, did you want to make public comment?
I didn't have enough time, and this is the only way to get the rest of it out there. Mr. Mayor might be getting hot heat up again.
Margaret Martini, Incline Village. For way less than $180,000 per year, I learned Mr. Lasik's name. It would be nice if he could answer our questions in less than four months. Please know it costs me money to do what the children of, to do what the children of the district, you all should be thanking me for not showing arrogance towards me. I do not appreciate your comment, Mr. Lasik. I'd also like to say that in doing the IB, starting out with IB, then Common Core, then et cetera, et cetera, with all of these programs and suggestions, and et cetera, that in talking to some of the teachers, I don't, I didn't quite understand what one of the items on the agenda was regarding, you know, what the teachers could say, and et cetera. But I did find out, in very unusually open ways, that the teachers were afraid to speak up if they didn't agree. They were afraid for their jobs, and they shouldn't be. And they were exponentially afraid for their jobs. We really don't agree with this program, we really don't think it's in the best interest of the children, but I need this job. And I think that as a school board, that you should be instructing your principals, and et cetera, and whoever your human resources are, that it's not only freedom of speech, and et cetera, but it's also a work-related issue that needs to be addressed. And the, and the teacher should be able to say whatever they think about it, whether it's implemented, or whether it's not, they still should have the opportunity, because they're the boots on the ground. You guys aren't the boots on the ground. The principals, the administrators, they're not really the boots on the ground. And, and I agree with John on the exorbitant salaries for administration, when our teachers really need to be better compensated. And I think that there should be a unilateral looking into the need for this many administrators. The public is not happy with that. And people that I talk to, taxpayers, parents, et cetera, why are we so administratively heavy on, on the Washoe County School District? And I think that really, one-third of the administration and programs that are not athletic, are not academically inclined, should be looked at carefully. You know, there's Boy Scouts, and et cetera, for social programs for children. It doesn't need to be provided by the school. Academics are the main thing that need provided by the school. And you are falling very short in Washoe County School District on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Martini. Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, then we will be adjourned. Oh, next meeting announcement, sorry. There it is, September 26th. Thank you, JJ. All right, we are adjourned.